...January thirteenth, City of Port Orchard Council Meeting to Order, and if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move on to citizens' comments, and I don't have a sign-up sheet at this time. Pardon me. Okay. I do have a sign-up sheet at this time. Ms. Whittleton.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to you all. As a citizen, I would like to let you know that as far as I'm concerned, the behavior I witnessed of some of the council at the last work-study, the one before Christmas, was totally unacceptable and embarrassing. We do not need discord and in harmony intertwined in the working of our city. Not only is it childish, it is not the kind of working environment I would wish for our city employees. We do not need manipulative behavior. We elected most of you, and that is with the expectation that you will work together as a team. I do not wish to have the loss of "historical knowledge" in reference to our previous attorney brought up again. As a citizen, I would be happy to document areas where he served your needs instead of those of the citizens. Kindly quit pouting and move on, and don't make it difficult. Regarding the need to use the city email, it appears some of you felt imposed upon. Couldn't you work it out? Mr. Chang was able to help with ideas and suggestions. Some of you acted like prima donnas instead of communicating and trying to work it out. You want to talk sudden change? Try being a citizen who regularly attends utility committee meetings, a known fact, only to find the packet handouts, which are usually provided, are not only prevented from being distributed to the public, but the consultant giving the presentation only speaks in terms like "the figure in the third column on the pink line," effectively making it pointless to try to sit in on the committee. No notice, no communication, no advance warning. How is that supposed to make us feel? Kind of like someone pulled a fast one. Lastly, the issue of the Kitsap Transit Board. Put on the agenda at the last minute and push through in favor of Mr. Petonzu instead of the mayor, as tradition indicates. Mr. Petonzu spoke for himself and his desire to see the promotion of the high-speed foot ferry brought to fruition by remaining on the board. For those of you who supported his wishes, I am asking, does this mean you endorse pursuing the project? If so, I must point out that pursuing this project is totally against what the voters have told Kitsap Transit and the electeds twice. What part of "no" is so difficult to accept? So now we have used more taxpayer dollars that may have benefited others for a project we rejected, and Mr. Petonzu openly wants to be part of bringing it to the voters again. How is this representing the people? Need I add this vote will cost the taxpayers again? Now I learned that it is being considered that the Kitsap Transit Executive Director be given a vote on the board. This is not representative of the people in that it is not an elected position, and I strongly object. It is so obvious that we are not being represented here by some of you. That is unacceptable. It is your job to represent us and work together with those we have elected. This is not some sort of political game. This is our community. I thank those of you who make effort to work together. Your efforts are greatly appreciated and noted. We need harmony, respect, and cooperation amongst one another, and I look to you to see that this is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only ones that have signed up, but that's okay. You get a second bite of the apple if you would like to... Yes, please.
Good evening, and I'm Vance Vaught, 243 Tremont Place. I just wanted to thank the mayor for coming to and actually paying for me and the citizens' breakfast at that last city utility committee meeting last week. I'm finding that these committee meetings and these work-study sessions are even more important than coming here, as I am tonight, and discussing what I see as problems and maybe solutions. And if we are going to be civic-minded citizens, I think that we need to encourage more people to come to these type of get-togethers because these meetings, work-study sessions and these committee meetings are where a lot of these ideas are being brought forward, and I do believe that civic-minded citizens have not just the problems, they don't just bring problems, they bring solutions. And if you, as city council members, would reach out to the citizens of this city, I think you'd find more solutions than you find problems. So I just wanted to again thank the mayor for being there for that, and he paid for the citizens, including myself, paid for our breakfast in his own, and I thought that was very commendable. And I just wanted to say that I object to having that utility meeting done outside of these chambers, mainly because it's timely information that the citizens and even the rest of you city council members that are not on these boards, it's that timely information that you can see on the video that will be presented to everybody right after it happens. Then it'll spark ideas, it'll spark input, and we can start having the visibility and public involvement that I think makes for a good city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, here.
I've got something pretty simple, I think.
Could you put the mic closer? There you go, because this is hard to get a good recording.
Nick Whittleton. Port Orchard resident. The water gap analysis. In 2011, we did a water rate increase, and in going over that, I'm finding a lot of the items that are listed here that we supposedly paid for via that increase are appearing on the gap analysis that we're looking at funding again. If I was having a house built and I paid for something, I wouldn't expect to have to pay for it again just because it's taken a few years to build my house. If you could please take a look at what we paid for in 2011, or what we supposedly paid for in 2011, and consider that as part of lesser gap. And ironically, on the email thing that we went through on the sixteenth, it's kind of funny because we don't get answers to our emails usually anyway. So, you know, throwing a big tizzy fit over something that you're not going to do, I don't get it, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Nicole Vaught, 243 Tremont Place. So first of all, I have a question for Mr. Dorsey. When was the work done in our street? Wasn't it in July or in August? Around those dates, right? So it's been, let's say, August, September, October, November, December, five months. How many times did I call you or send you an email in distress because we had a problem in our street with the water? That was a great job, and I think it's going to stay like that. I know that your team is still coming, monitoring some of the samples, but it was a great job. Thank you very much. That's what I wanted to say. The other part is I agree completely with what Mrs. Whittleton said. I watched those videos several times of the last work session that you had, and I am absolutely appalled by the action of certain people here. You were addicted to act like citizens and to act for us, and it's absolutely true, it was a coup that you did. You were arrogant, rude, and it's a shame for that city. I would like you to reconsider what you did. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Start at this end of the room, or just raise your hand to be identified? Nope. Okay. Our city attorney's here, and I would like to ask her opinion. I would like to make a citizen's comment, not as the mayor, but as a citizen. Should I recuse myself, or should I, can I do it from here?
I think you can do it right from there, it'd be fine.
Okay, okay. So I just want to be sure everybody understands that I'm speaking as a citizen here. I and the citizens of Port Orchard have lost a great friend and supporter with the passing of Gil Michael. If you were lucky enough to have worked with Gil, you knew that he always worked to represent the citizens of Port Orchard. I knew that from the very beginning. His core belief was clear: Do not take advantage of your position for personal gain. Starting with his distinguished service in the U.S. Navy and ending with his dedicated service to our city, I believe Gil was a true patriot, and I will miss him. Rest in peace, Gil. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. What's your pleasure, council?
Should we approve the original agenda first?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, approve the original agenda. Chang.
I'd like to add an item to five C. This would be a presentation for the, I can't read my handwriting, proclamation for Martin Luther King Jr.
Okay, we'll do that as C. Presentation C. Anything else?
Do you approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Yes.
I would like to move a couple of items from the consent agenda to the business agenda, just for discussion, please, and that would be four E and four H.
Actually, four J. I was interested in hearing something about four J. Why don't we do that as well?
And four J. All right, the amendment then is to include removal of E, H, and J, and adding that to the agenda.
To the business items.
To the business items. Okay? Anything else?
Is that a motion in itself, or...
No.
Since we didn't do it before the motion.
We haven't had a motion yet.
It doesn't matter to me.
We do have a motion.
I will ask our attorney, because...
Do you have a motion for, if you'd have amended?
Right.
And you've amended it with the additional items, and unless you want to go back and say it's amended as of a certain time, I think you can go ahead with that motion.
Motion maker's fine with removing those, I just want to make sure we're doing it right.
Everybody okay with that?
Do we have a second?
Yes.
A second too. Thank you.
All right, then. We are going to be voting on the amended agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to the amended consent agenda. Remind you, E, H, and J have been removed. What's your pleasure?
May I move to approve the consent agenda as adjusted?
Second.
Any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor of the amended, approval of the amended consent agenda, all those say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're at item five, presentations. Ms. Lucarelli, do you want to lead us into the presentation portion of our program?
Yes. The council went out on a very rainy night in December in a van altogether. It was so damp that we had to actually take our hands to the windows to get the fog off and the condensation to be able to see the neighborhoods, and it was a joy. We are always looking to promote community, and it's a great deal of fun to travel around and see how everyone decorates for the holidays, but a couple of places really stood out. What we have to say is that we were so impressed as we came down the street, made this turn, and there was like a winter wonderland, and it was Fantail Neighborhood. So we are happy to present these awards tonight to the whole neighborhood, and thank you so much for that great spirit. It was quite an effort, and one thing we didn't get to see, I guess you had a banner that went across the road that the wind took down, but we didn't get there in time to see that, but we saw all the lights, and it was just a joy. So all of you here in the neighborhood, Fanta neighborhood, we have some awards for you.
Please come forward, and we normally try to get a photograph so our newsletter can have a good...
I actually had a question for you guys as well. Did you guys meet beforehand, or has it just come together magically?
We're just one big happy family.
That's nice.
So, this is mine?
Brandy. Brandy. Yeah, and then the council would be in the picture too, the council's award.
Great job.
Beautiful.
Looks like we should stand up if they're going to take a picture.
I'm fine, citizens.
It doesn't matter.
Want to stand?
You guys want to stand? Yeah. Let's all stand.
We can all get in this much.
I need to come up here.
Got to get even, sorry. Okay, you ready? Say yay, say you're working. All right, I got a bunch, I think. Oh, there it goes. Nice, perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we're not done yet.
That's a lot of work.
Oh, we're not done. Speeches.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, just to let you know, Fantail is actually at the ridge at McCormick Woods, and we also, from this neighborhood, found our first and second place winners. So the second place award goes to the Lorton family, and their house was just amazing. It was just spectacular with Santas and lights and everything, and they are just wonderful. So the Lortons, and then first place in that very same neighborhood, the Roy family. Yes, we loved your Snoopy. And then last but not least, the best business award went to Kitsap Bank, and Kitsap Bank every year actually does so much to decorate their shrubbery and everything outside of the bank to help with our Chimes and Lights Festival. So we said Kitsap Bank gets the first place and second place, and a very close second was the Port of Bremerton. So we're grateful for all of you, to all of you for what you've done, and we hope to actually promote this a little bit more in the future with maybe some prizes. Thank you again very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we do have a presentation from Mr. Dave Williams from AWC, Association of Washington Cities, and he has a very cool program that he's going to be telling us about, and I think maybe you even have a few minutes at the end to answer a few questions for, from us, so...
Thank you, I would love to do that.
So, okay, if you'd...
I'm joined by Alex Holdon, who are based in Olympia. I'm Dave Williams with the Association of Cities. I'm the mayor. I have Christmas lights on my house, but I don't get it.
Well, here, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'll whip you up one. Could you lift, could you... Can you lift the mic up just a little bit higher so, yeah, that'll capture you.
All right. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me. My job in Olympia, working for you, is I'm what's called the Director of Government Relations for the Association of Washington Cities. We thank you very much for the participation of your city and the other two hundred and eighty cities in the state. We are facing a most difficult legislative session this year. I brought packets for you, if could we get, thank you. And the mayor, several months ago, I think in the beginning of the fall, was at a meeting where I was talking to members of the Kitsap Regional Council, and afterwards asked if I would come and talk to you all, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'll tell you a little bit about what we call Operation Strong Cities is all about, where it came from, but I really would like to start by thanking you here in the city for the work that you've done, which is really the kinds of things that we're asking the other cities around the state to do. You have adopted a legislative agenda. You've identified key issues for your community, both in capital needs that you have, in how you can continue to have a strong partnership with the state in providing some of the revenues you need to support your public safety programs and other programs you have here. You communicate with your legislators, you meet with them before the session, you have people like Alex helping you in Olympia with the message for the city, and we just really appreciate the work that you've done. In your packet, we have a couple of things that I'll kind of go over with you, including probably if there's a takeaway for a city that's doing such a great job, if I had a suggestion of something you could do even better. We've provided several copies of recent editorials that have been in papers around the state, the most recent one this morning, the Spokesman Review, where cities banded together and talked about the needs of communities, their communities, and the importance of continuing to share things like liquor revenue to help support public safety. I'd like to remind people that the Association of Washington Cities, which is a private, nonprofit, nonpartisan organization that employs a few people like me to help talk about the needs of cities, we don't endorse anybody, we're not allowed to give donations to anybody. The information that we provide to legislators in Olympia is factual, timely, trying to help you do your job well, and it's our job to communicate with legislators, who we in cities and in counties are kind of the partnership of what makes governance work here, what helps produce infrastructure, what helps support jobs, what helps supports quality communities. The association was founded in 1933, eighty-one, eighty-two years ago now, and interestingly enough, at a time when there's a lot of discussion and debate about things like legalized marijuana, the Association of Washington Cities was founded in 1933 at the end of prohibition. And your predecessors in communities around the state got together and decided, you know, when prohibition ended and liquor was going to be legal again, the impacts of consumption, of overconsumption, of social problems associated with that, the responsibilities fell to local governments to deal with, and if there was going to be new taxes collected on liquor, they thought that it was important that some of those taxes be shared with cities and with counties. So since 1933, for over eighty years, we have had, you have had, a partnership with the state in sharing some of those liquor revenues to help with your general fund obligations. We've seen in the last several years, as the state's budget got tighter, the interests and pressures that they were under to do more with less, or at least do more with less than they thought they needed, they started looking under rocks of where could we find money instead of raising taxes, instead of raising new revenue? Are there monies that we can shift? And we've started to see what we think is a dangerous precedent of big borrowing and stealing from funds that have been available and used to support cities over the last eighty-some years. Also in your packet, we include a summary of the revenues for the last two years by an ill-budget that are provided to the city, and it's a little bit under a half a million dollars. The bulk of that comes from liquor taxes, the bulk of that comes from criminal justice support, and your amounts of revenues have been growing over time as the city's grown, but those revenues have started to be reduced recently. In particular, things like what we call the Public Works Trust Fund, which is a loan, a low-interest loan program that we in the association and others supported being enacted back in the mid-eighties. We actually worked in very strong partnership with the development community, the real estate community. The state was growing, the infrastructure needs were expanding, rules and regulations, both from the state and federal level, were coming down saying you have to have cleaner water, you have to have sewage treatment better than you've had before, you have to do a variety of different things, and it was expensive work. So we agreed to raising utility taxes that residents around the state pay, and those revenues were put into a fund and loaned back at low-interest rates, up until a few years ago, when the monies were growing because more and more projects were getting built and payments were coming back, and also because of the growth of the state, we have more and more utility customers. So the revenue was growing, and it just looked too attractive for legislators to leave a loan and pay for the infrastructure, and help pay for the infrastructure that our citizens need, so they raided those funds. We're doing a lot to try to bring those revenues back, we're doing a lot to try to make sure that the legislature restores the liquor revenue. Your city has adopted a legislative package, which we very much appreciate, not only identifies certain capital needs that you have as the city, and just by the way, as an association that represents 281 cities, we're not in a position to lobby for individual capital projects for one city over another, it's a competitive pot of money, we don't pick the winners. Our job is to make sure that the resource is there for you to compete for. So you have people like Alex and others, and yourselves, when you come in and talk and talk with your legislators to advocate for you. Again, our job is to make sure that the resources are there for you. One of the things that our Board of Directors asked us to do is we keep coming to Olympia and saying how important cities are, and that there's a partnership that needs to be maintained, and somehow, it's not, the message isn't getting through as strongly as we would like with legislators. And frankly, I hope this doesn't offend anyone, when push comes to shove and the legislature's looking for money under rocks, it's easier for them to take it from cities than it is for other people, because you are so nice. When your legislator comes home, and I'm not talking about any particular legislator, I'm just talking about legislators generally, legislators are your friends, they're your coworkers, when they come back, you like to thank them for the work that they've done. You know what it's like to be an elected official. It's not easy, there's a lot of pressures, a lot of demands, you've got to make compromises. Those legislators, when they're running for office, oftentimes come to you and ask for your endorsement. One of the things that we're suggesting is that cities, city officials, and we've got over 2,000 of them across the state like you, think a little more carefully about your willingness to endorse people unless they're helping move your agenda forward. You are very fortunate in this area, you have a really good legislative delegate, delegation, some with tenure, and some like Senator Angel, who have a clear understanding of what it's like to be in local government. She was your commissioner, she's been very open and accessible to us, both as a House member and as a senator. She cares about and believes in local government, and we think that's really fortunate. There's a lot of people in Olympia who don't understand local government, just think we're another special interest, not someone who's trying to help make the whole system work. So one of the things that we did, and we were asked to try some new things, some of them are working, some of them are not, we produced this thing called Operation Strong Cities. It's a little pocket guide, we've produced over 2,000 of these and circulated them amongst city officials around the state, and it just gives you some very simple tips on things that you might consider doing, many of which you already do. First page talking about doing things differently. Make sure when you're talking to your legislator... Make sure when you're talking to your legislator, tell them what you need and ask them for commitments. They can always say no, but they can't say yes unless you ask them. I already mentioned taking stock of your political assets. When you're endorsing or saying nice things in chamber meetings or other kinds of things, make sure that your legislators are working for you. No more excuses. Second page here. This is—this is something, when people have looked at it, they kind of go, this is the Association of Washington Cities. We don't—we don't see stuff like this coming through from you. It's our attempt to remind you that one-hundred-and-forty-seven legislators—and you know what it's like to be on a deliberative body. You know—you know more about some things than your seatmates, and they know more about you on other types of issues. Legislators rely upon experts to help them on certain issues, and oftentimes, if it's a local government funding issue, if it's a mandate or no mandate issue, they'll turn to somebody who knows more about it than they do. But if something doesn't happen, you make errors, you said wasn't on a committee, leadership wouldn't let me do that. We're urging you to think, be nice, but think about making sure that you're not letting them off the hook with excuses. Continue to press the issues that are important to you, that you've identified on your agenda. Develop a legislative agenda. You wouldn't believe how many cities haven't done that. We're very encouraged, just in the last six months, we have many more cities adopting legislative agendas. I used—I included in your packet an example from the city of Sumner. The city of Sumner, small city, the mayor wrote a wonderful piece, which we've included in here in the local paper, and he's also included in their legislative agenda, a series of things about why care about a little town like Sumner. And I would encourage you to look at what he's suggested here. Figure out a story about why Port Orchard matters. It's good for your community to know, it's good for your legislator to know, and these are the kinds of things that legislators remember, especially, again, if legislators who are making decisions that affect you don't know much about you, they're not going to remember as much what your agenda is as they're going to remember a story about why Port Orchard is important. Something else that we've included in the packet on the left-hand side is a little chart that we've just put together. We call it Cities by the Numbers. It's—as the legislature is looking at trying to balance their budget, fund education, and as I'm sure you're all aware, the major challenge facing the legislature this year is how they're going to respond to legislation they passed defining what basic K-12 education is and what their responsibilities are to fund it. The state was sued by a family, saying, you told us this is what we could expect in our education system. Where's the money to make it happen? And the legislature hasn't produced the revenue to live up to the legislation that they've passed. So, the Supreme Court ultimately came up in what's known as the McLeary case to say, you shall fund this, or we're going to hold you in contempt. What does holding in contempt mean at the state level? No one knows. It's never happened before. At the end of this legislative session, scheduled to end—it just started yesterday, it's scheduled to end on the twenty-second of April—if the legislature hasn't sufficiently funded education, the state Supreme Court could do things such as a cease-and-desist order, you can't spend money on anything but education, we're going to take over your budget. We don't know what's going to happen. The legislature is going to be debating, how are we going to fund this? Unfortunately, it appears, they can't decide what the numbers are, how much is minimally necessary. We've already seen in a couple of days in Olympia, they're having a hard time agreeing with one another about how much is enough. But we do know this, in addition to figuring out how much is enough for K-12 education, they're under order from the court to not keep putting people in hospitals instead of mental health facilities. They're also trying to deal with the fact that the citizens passed an initiative this fall, which further compounds the education dilemma that they're facing. The McLeary decision had to do with class sizes primarily in kindergarten through third grade. The initiative passed at the state level, Initiative 1183, expands the class size reductions far beyond that and could cost the state another $2 billion. I say all of this because these things are important. Quality schools are important in our communities, but the push and shove about where they're going to find the money, we're very concerned that the money needed to make your city stay strong and continue to keep this state vibrant are in jeopardy. So, back again to this little chart. Cities by the number. Of the seven million people in the state, four-and-a-half million of them live in incorporated cities. Of the—
Growth state product.
The value of products—
Produced in this state.
Ninety-five percent of those come outside of cities. It seems like a really high number. And I'll give you an example. When an apple is grown someplace and it's shipped through a city, there's value added to the apple. When the apple comes into the city and applesauce is made in the city, the value of that apple expands. Think about the value of an apple versus the value of an airplane. There's a lot of stuff produced in cities. It's important that cities have transportation infrastructure, that they have—that they have good water and sewer, that they have places for workers to live, good parks for people. Anyway, so, we're trying to make sure that the legislature understands that if you don't have strong cities, the value of what happens in this state is reduced. Ninety percent of all retail sales occur within cities. As a state that's reliant upon the sales tax as a significant revenue stream, just as it is in the city, it's important to make sure that our commercial base is strong and vibrant and healthy and that people can come and get to and from the stores. Sixty-nine percent of all job-generating businesses are located in cities. Sixty-four percent of the state's population is here, and it's growing. Ever since the enactment of the Growth Management Act back in 1990, you've seen it in Port Orchard and other people have seen it in communities around the state. More and more people are living in cities. The pressures of cities to deal with growth, density, infrastructure, compatibility with your neighbors, those are—those are critical things, but people are moving in and living in cities. We expect another seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand people to live in the state of Washington in the next ten years. Most of those people are going to live in incorporated areas. Sixty-one percent of the state's law enforcement and fire personnel are employed by cities. Fifty percent of your operating budgets, on average, are spent on public safety. Six-point-seven billion dollars in sales tax comes from within cities to the state general fund. Four-point-five billion of the state's business and occupation tax revenue is generated within cities, and one-point-three billion in property taxes for the state schools comes from people in cities. Cities need to remain—remain healthy and strong. Does it mean that we're not open to changes and dealing with the way the state deals with us? Of course, we have to be open to those changes. But maintaining shared revenue is important. Investing in infrastructure is important. Looking at potential new sources of revenue or adjustments to revenues that you need here at the local level, including—cities are in a unique position in the state. The state government has a—has a funding source for their transportation needs. It comes out of the gas tax. Counties have a road levy. Transportation gets funded through the road levy. Cities do not have a dedicated funding source for transportation. Transportation needs compete with all the other general fund needs you have, and as the state considers—and we're optimistic that the state will look at some new revenue, both for them and for cities, to make sure that your transportation infrastructure can be taken care of. The marijuana issue. This is a difficult one for jurisdictions around the state to deal with, and with the legalization of recreational marijuana, many cities are facing questions about where do we allow it? Do we allow it? And in addition to that, the legal marijuana, which is highly regulated and taxed, is competing with the medical marijuana, which is neither regulated nor taxed. And so, the legislature, I'm quite convinced, is going to be grappling with, how do we make sense of dealing with a black market that's not regulated at all? A medical market, which isn't regulated but is visible—is visible to the public and is legal but not taxed? And then, how do we deal with this recreational system of stores, processors, and growers? And right now, one of the things that we at the Association of Cities are focused on is it's important to make some sense out of the recreational and medical laws, reconcile them to be more compatible. And also, because there are going to be impacts from people using marijuana more openly, and the revenue is being generated for the state, and the feds have said, in order for you to continue doing this, you have to promise us that you're enforcing, monitoring, making sure it doesn't have access to minors, a number of things. There are about eight conditions the feds have stipulated. And we think five of those stipulations are the responsibility of you, not the state. We think the state needs to share, just like we did in 1933. We think the state should share some of that marijuana revenue with cities and counties. We're very pleased, whatever you think of the governor. The governor came out right before Christmas with his proposed budget, and he's the first one to say, cities and counties deserve some of this money. In his proposed budget, he's suggesting we get it. We're thankful for that. We want to work with the—with the House and the Senate. We have a lot of champions working with us on that, and we're hopeful that we can make that happen. At the same time, we think it's important that local control be maintained, and that if jurisdictions choose not to allow recreational stores or processors, that option remain your choice. Some legislators think, if we're going to share any of this revenue, maybe we should preempt the local authority and tell you, you have to cite these things. We're trying to suggest to them, make some revenue available, let's see how people respond to that, and it's really important to maintain local control. So, our Operation Strong Cities efforts are underway. They're going to evolve. You all are doing a great job. Please stay in touch with your legislators—not only with your legislators, but make sure that you're doing what you can to inform your citizens about the things that are important to you, because you're their constituents—they're your constituents, but they're also your legislators' constituents. Some of the—some of the media work that I've given you examples of is one of the ways that people are trying to do that. We have—coming up later this week, we have what we call a Mayor's Exchange in Olympia, one of the training sessions we do. You can't trade in your mayor, but mayors come and exchange information about what's working, what's not. We're going to be focusing on what cities are doing in cooperation with school districts to make sure that there's good community programs in support of the schools. We also have what we call our City Action Days, which in mid-to-late February—I think it's the eighteenth and nineteenth of February—several hundred city officials come to town. We have an exciting program. We have you up on the Hill. We're going to be doing it this year in conjunction with the County Association. County and city officials are going to be arm-in-arm, working with legislators to make sure that strong local governments survive and thrive. So, thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, thank you for your support of AWC and for the support you provide in Olympia with people like Alex.
All right. Well, thank you. Questions? If you think of any questions. Mr. Chang?
You might want to mention that this pocket guide is available on your website.
Yes, thank you. And there will be a session edition coming out before our legislative conference. And if I might just also mention on our website, awcnet.org, one of the new things that we have that we're pretty excited about is we have a—an open data portal. So, we are putting information on there about city budgets, city infrastructure investments, all kinds of things, things that citizens are interested in knowing. It's also information that you can click on, maps—it'll show you—it'll compare data from different-sized jurisdictions. All the marijuana stores and revenue they're producing are on there. There's all kinds of things, and it's something—we're very committed to doing what we can. We think one of the ways to help make cities strong is to make sure that citizens are aware that there's a lot of information out there, and we're trying to make it available in—in one easy place where you can find out things about your city and other cities as well.
Now, also, I think weekly, you have a legislative review—
Yes.
—that you put online.
We do.
That—it makes it a little more manageable, a little more bite-sized than if you wait for the end of the month and then get inundated by three or four weeks of their meeting. So, I appreciate that, too, because you can go to that, and it—it's not quite so daunting to get an idea of what they're doing in Olympia.
So, every—every Friday, you get an email from us. I'm hoping to have it at about one o'clock every Friday. That kind of gives you the highlights of the week, things—if we need your help, things we'd like your help on. Rarely, but sometimes importantly, we'll send out what we call action alerts, where we're asking you to pick up the phone, talk to your legislator, talk about something that's important to you and other cities.
I think in even isolated cases, maybe even take a trip, because there are a lot of our brothers and sisters in—in the east of this—the state can't take that trip very easily, but we can for them, so.
We'd love it. We'd appreciate it. And again, working with Alex, we can find ways that you can do it efficiently.
Other questions?
Before we end, actually, if I can just add one thing, is the position that obviously Brianna Taylor and I fill in Olympia is really a conduit of information and relationships wherever is appropriate in Olympia. So, whether that is, as Dave mentioned at the beginning of his presentation, directly to local legislators on competitive projects like capital projects, where all cities statewide are competing against one another for that sort of funding. And in those cases, it's more appropriate for us to directly contact the relationships that we have with our local legislators, because they're better advocates. But luckily, we have, on certain issues, a voice in solidarity with other cities statewide. So, you look at things like recent property tax issues that have been brought up, liquor revenue, marijuana revenue, things that all cities tend to agree on statewide, where it is the job of myself and Brianna as well in Olympia on the ground to communicate both with AWC and to legislators, and that's kind of how we all fit into—into this. So, communicating directly with AWC when they do their action alerts, but we also do our own legislative updates weekly, and just keeping in constant contact with Brianna and myself, and ask any questions that you would like, and if there are any issues that you would like to engage on, feel free to just contact us at any time. We're more than happy to help.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd just like to finish by saying, I'll send you my address for my Christmas lights next year, if you'd like to come and—
Okay. We'll have to start a little earlier. I guess the—the committee will have to leave, probably daybreak, to get over to—
Or I would just accept an award.
Just—you just—okay.
I think I have an extra if you really wanted to—
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming. I really appreciate it. I think—I think you've given us a lot of food for thought. Thank you.
We had a delicious dinner at Amy's down there.
Oh, did you? All right.
Again, that was excellent.
Okay. I don't want to brag too much, but we have a lot of good restaurants. You could come back every day for a year and not run out of restaurants.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We did add a third proclamation that I forgot to—to get on here, but I will read it quickly. Whereas the city of Port Orchard joins the Ebenezer African Methodist Episcopal Church in its annual Martin Luther King Day program and celebration, and whereas this year, a Day of Service and Action theme is a great opportunity for us to recognize all the churches, service clubs, nonprofit organizations, and civic organizations that work every day to serve and unite Kitsap County residents. And whereas the South Kitsap High School Naval Junior Recruit Officers Training Corps is comprised of ninth-through-twelfth-grade South Kitsap students who, by their action, have chosen to honor Dr. King and make a difference in our community, and whereas on January nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the South Kitsap High School Naval Recruit Officers Training Corps will be conducting a community beautification cleanup in three separate locations here in Port Orchard: the Port Orchard Waterfront Park, Givens Field City Park, and the Retzold Veterans Memorial. Whereas I applaud their effort and hold them up as an example of what Dr. King— effort and hold them up as an example of what Dr. King stood for, and how we can faithfully confirm by our actions that Dr. King's, King's dream is still alive, and now therefore be it resolved, that I Timothy C. Mathis, Mayor of the city of Port Orchard, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 19th, 2015, as Martin Luther King Day, a day of service in action in the city of Port Orchard, and urge its citizens to honor the memory of Dr. King by showing love and respect for one another, and with all the unselfish acts we undertake benefiting our community. Signed, the fifth day of January 2015. So I will be presenting this to the folks at the Ebenezer African Methodist Episcopal Church. On the 19th, I'll be representing the city there. You're all invited, all of the city of Port Orchard's invited to the celebration. It's Monday, January 19th, at 10 o'clock at Kitsap County Fairgrounds. And it's, it's a very moving celebration. It lasts about an hour, and all public's invited, and so lots of parking and lots of places to, you know, to park there, and lots of rooms. So anybody and everybody, if you can do it on Monday, come, 10 o'clock, it's, it's well worth your time. Okay, thank you. We don't have any public hearing tonight, so we'll start with business item A. And Ms. Ryerson, would you lead us into that one, please?
I'm not sure.
Your turn now.
Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay. So RCW 3523191 states that the council, at their first council meeting of each calendar year, shall appoint a mayor pro tem for the current council member, from the current council members. I provided you the RCW, so staff recommends a council member make a motion to appoint a council pro tem for the year 2015.
Yes, Mr. Patonsu.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Ashby to be our mayor pro tem for 2015.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to nominate Councilwoman Ashby. Any discussion? Right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Congratulations. We have a new mayor pro tem. Okay, we'll move on to item B, adoption of ordinance amending the Port Orchard Municipal Code. And I think that's up to you and I, Brandy, but I'll let you read it into the record, if you would, please. Okay?
So the chief and the treasurer was not able to attend tonight's meeting, so they've asked me to go ahead and read the staff report. So this ordinance authorizes the sales and use tax to be added to the price of the parking pass rates as complicated and deliberated in the 2015 budget. Sales and use tax defined in RCW 8214020 is required to be collected upon the amount of parking pass rates established for the city parking lots as defined in Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12.480. The adopted budget includes $10,300 to be collected in 2015 and paid to the Department of Revenue for sales and use tax on parking pass rates. Last year, the Department of Revenue performed an examination resulting in $19,800 due for sales and tax on hourly parking fees in city parking lots, and for parking for 30 days or more when the customer does not have a designated space or stall. The city paid the amount due from the parking rate fee revenue that is otherwise considered revenue of the general fund. Staff is recommending that the ordinance be adopted as presented.
Question, Mr. Patonsu.
I move to adopt ordinance number, an ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12.600, adding sales, sales and use tax to the price of parking passes, pass rates.
Seconded. Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This came up in the budget process, just to refresh everybody's memory. The legislature decided to add, or wants us to pass on to them, sales tax collected on our, our parking fees, and so it's coming out of our parking fees unless we add it on to our parking fees. So that was how this came about in the budget process, and I felt it was supported by everyone when we went through the budget process, that we would add sales tax on top of our parking.
It's a pass-through.
It's a pass-through to the state. We're not getting it.
Right. It's Department of Revenue actually directed us to, to pay it. Okay.
If we didn't take this action, we would receive less parking revenue, because we still have to pay the state.
Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance amending Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12.600. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? That motion carries. Okay, we're at 7C, approval of contract with HDR Engineering. Mr. Dorsey, could you lead us into that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. In 2014, and in association with the Well 9 Project closeout, the city of Port Orchard contracted professional engineering peer review services with HDR Engineering Incorporated through the offices of McGavitt Graves. The purpose of this evening's action is to approve a contract with HDR Engineering directly with the city of Port Orchard for continued professional engineering peer review services as the Well 9 Project closeout task is still in progress. Staff recommends that the council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with HDR Engineering in an amount not to exceed $26,000 for Well 9 peer review additional services.
Council, yes, Mr. Clausen.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a contract authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $26,000 for Well Number 9 peer review additional services.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor to discussion. Anybody have a discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion then. Motion on the floor is for the mayor to execute a contract with HDR Engineering in the amount of not to exceed $26,000 for Well 9 peer review additional services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? That motion carries. Thank you. Discussion, purchase of 640 Bay Street. Mr. Bond, could you lead us into that one, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Before I get into my report, I just wanted to point out that Miles Stover, the receiver for the seller, is here tonight if there's any questions of him, so he is available. On June 24th, 2014, the city entered into a purchase and sale agreement to purchase the 640 Bay Street property. This purchase was to close within five days from the latter of A, entry by the receivership court of the order approving the sale and the city's acceptance of the receiver's abatement and demolition of the building, or such other date as the receiver and city may determine. The city has not closed on the property for a variety of reasons. The reasons are summarized as follows. One, during demolition, a portion of the 640 Bay Street building was removed that directly abutted the building to the west owned by a Mr. and Mrs. Jeffcoat. By removing the portion of the 640 Bay Street building, Mr. Jeffcoat's building was left exposed to the elements. Shortly after demolition, the city received a letter from the Jeffcoat's attorney concerning the exposed wall. In this letter, their attorney also raised a possible adverse possession claim related to the stairs on the east side of their building and the access to those stairs. The interim city attorney wrote to the attorney for the receiver asking whether the seller would address these issues. The attorney for the seller has not responded to this letter. Two, the receiver of the 640 Bay Street property has emailed the city asking if, one, the city would pay 50% of the cost of a survey of the property line to determine the extent of any encroachment. Two, if no encroachment is found, would the city proceed with the purchase? And three, if an encroachment is found, would the city be willing to accept a BLA or access easement under the existing purchase and sale agreement at the current purchase price? Three, under Section 2.1.4 of the agreement, the receiver must provide the city title insurance policy, must provide a title insurance policy, which policy shall show that the title to the property is free and clear of all liens except easements and restrictions of record as identified on Exhibit D. If the city may terminate the agreement, the city, if the city may terminate the agreement, I'm not sure if that.
Take off that first, yeah.
The city may terminate the agreement if the city objects to anything in the title policy which can't be cured by a receivership court order. Item number four, you can strike from the memo as the receiver has agreed that they would be willing to pay for the ALTA title survey that would be required to close, so that's no longer an issue. So the recommendation for this evening is to discuss whether the city wants to proceed with the purchase of the property, two, if so, whether it wants to proceed with the purchase of the property, given the possible encroachment and adverse possession claim at the same price and under the same conditions as set forth in the agreement. And because there are issues relating to city liability due to possible, the possible adverse possession claim, this issue can be discussed in executive session if the council desires. And I don't know if the attorney has anything to add to that.
Not at this time.
Okay, just a clarification, that, just that one point is, is an executive session conversation we can have, right?
On the adverse possession issue, and also the issue related to termination of the agreement altogether, and perhaps the issue related to recovery of the city's earnest money.
Those three, okay. What's your pleasure, council?
I think I'd like to have an executive session.
I think I would, too. Do you want to discuss any of the other, the points that we can discuss publicly first, or you just want to go ahead and move into the executive session, come back and discuss?
I think my preference would be to start with an executive session.
Okay. All right, then, then we'll, we'll go ahead and. Has anybody an idea of how much time we've made?
I would start with 15 minutes, and the purpose of the executive session is potential litigation under RCW 4230110 sub 1 sub I.
Okay, 4230.
110.
110.
Sub 1 sub I.
Sub 1 sub I. All right, then, we will be going into an executive session for 15 minutes, related to RCW 42301110 sub 1 and sub I, and then we will come back and continue the discussion on this subject.
I think you should get an iPhone. It's the best thing. It's great. It's my favorite toy. Hazaras. That's the app for the city. Email. I showed it to you, right? Turned out. You're getting an iPad.
Yes.
All right, we're ready to go ahead and, and continue our meeting, and we are on item, discussion, item 7D, purchase of 640 Bay Street. And, yes.
Public has asked that I repeat the three issues that the council was discussing in executive session, which was possible litigation based on the count, the demand for the earnest money under the agreement, and the decision to terminate the agreement, possible litigation based on the adverse possession claim.
Okay. Counsel?
Want, one of us to speak for the council? I guess we discussed those very issues and have directed Ms. Morris to, to write a letter to the receiver addressing our concerns. And I myself really don't want to negotiate the purchase and sale of a piece of property from the dais. I think that's better done through staff.
If I may correct that, I will be discussing this with the attorney.
Yes.
Rather than the receiver.
Yes, the attorney.
The receiver's attorney, yes. And it'll be attorney-to-attorney discussion about what we discussed back there in executive session.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's, that's what we'll be doing on item 7D. Now we'll go to E on the consent agenda, and we'll be talking to that. It's a approval of contract with Progressive Landscaping LLC for park maintenance service. Mr. Dorsey, could you tell us about that one, please?
Thank you. On November 13th, 2014, the city of Port Orchard Public Works Department requested cost proposals from three local landscape maintenance companies listed on the current MRSC small works roster for the 2015 park maintenance contract, with the scope of work including the Roundabout Park, waterfront parking lots three and four, the flower beds behind the library, Etta Turner Park, the Flagpole Triangle located at Bay and Kitsap, and the employee parking lot eight on Prospect. Please note, instead of requesting a single bid for all identified work within the scope of work as done in the past, the city requested separate cost proposals for each work area, thereby allowing the staff flexibility in the 2015 contract award process, given potential budget reductions and/or scope of work changes. In order to comply with the 2015 budget, only the Roundabout Park, Etta Turner Park, and the Flagpole Triangle will be maintained via contract, with the remaining areas to be covered by the Public Works Department staff. Therefore, the accepted proportions of the bid totals received are as follows: Progressive Landscaping, $7,530 and 30 cents, including tax. CNL Lawn Maintenance and J&amp;M Garden Maintenance did not submit a bid. Upon review by staff, it was determined that Progressive Landscaping LLC was the lowest qualified bidder for the accepted work areas mentioned above, with the bid of $7,530, tax included. The Public Works Department has confirmed that the public work advertisement process was followed, and that the proposal was able to be funded within the, not street fund, Parks Reserve Fund of the approved 2015 budget. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute an ordinary maintenance contract with Progressive Landscaping LLC in an amount not to exceed $7,530 for the reduced scope 2015 park maintenance services to include the Roundabout, Etta Turner Park, and the Flagpole Triangle.
Okay, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a contract authorizing the mayor to execute an ordinary maintenance contract with Progressive Landscapes LLC in an amount not to exceed $7,530 for the reduced scope 2015 parks maintenance services to include the Roundabout Park, Etta Turner Park, and the Flagpole Triangle.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion. Mr. Patonsu, you have your hand up.
Mr. Dorsey, so the only thing that's really being removed is the parking lot across the street, the gravel parking lot?
No, the, the gravel parking lot across the street and lots three and four, which are those planters around, between Amy's and the pavilion, the, the paid parking area.
Okay.
The library is also going out, but if you remember, we struck an agreement with them that they're going to be maintaining that through that McCormick Garden Club, and if not, it's going to be replaced as a zero landscape. So our responsibility for the library maintenance has basically gone away. So really, it's, and all, all Progressive was doing on the lot eight over here, over here, was mowing that grass on the hill. We were still taking care of weeds and cutting back everything back there. So it's really the lot three and four that our staff is going to have to.
That's just blowing the lot?
It's, they mainly just cleaned out the flower beds on the, the parking landscaping islands. So, you know, it was a, a budget decision. And of course, the bid that we had this year was much higher than we had last year.
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
If I'm reading this correctly, Mark, the cost for maintaining those planters and parking. parking three and four was twenty-four hundred a year?
The, yes, the maintenance of lots three and four is twenty-four hundred dollars a year.
And the parking lot across the street is six hundred dollars a year.
Yeah, because they are only just mowing that slope, they weren't actually taking care of the parking lot.
I guess I have some concern over the parking lots downtown, I mean, that was...
Two hundred dollars a month.
The reason that we did this was that that area was starting to look pretty shabby with weeds and things, and...
Well, you can, I mean, in their proposal, they did say that they would go ahead and still do everything for ninety-six hundred dollars a year plus tax, but we only had eight thousand dollars budgeted, so...
So sixteen hundred dollars plus tax we'd have to come up with to do everything.
Sixteen hundred plus tax additional.
Yeah, the total's ten thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty cents. So it's basically twenty-four thirty-five over budget.
So twenty-five hundred plus or minus.
I share your concerns, Mr. Clausen, that's, you know, in particular, it was the Roundabout and the, these, these very visible areas in our downtown that, you know, it's not, the challenge is, is when the water main breaks, so the sewer pump station fails, it's all hands on deck at Public Works to go solve those problems, so then all of a sudden, the weeding and the mowing doesn't happen that week, where, when we decided, gosh, six or seven years ago, we went to, and, you know, privatizing this, we can hold somebody accountable, once a week, the grass gets mowed, then the weeds are pulled, and our Public Works folks can focus on, you know, bigger issues.
Mr. Kirkley?
Mark, what would it cost in staff time to take care of the other areas that aren't in this for a year? More or less than twenty-four hundred in your, in your estimation?
It's got to be way more. I would assume more, because it's prevailing wage, but, like I said, I couldn't come up with an exact number, as I, I think Councilwoman Ashby asked that question, the reality of it is, is it's seasonal employees, so that comes up at a lesser rate. We've never tracked, because they're, they're still doing City Hall and all the areas they're doing, they would just swing by picking those areas up, so...
Would it be, how long, is this a two-year agreement?
This is a one-year agreement, but we've, this was the first year that, in some of these ordinary maintenance contracts, we've been now adding the provision in the contract that allows the city to, and the termination, it should be the form that allows us to extend.
My, my thought is, it's going to take, our guys are going to spend more time going and getting the tools from the shed and driving there than they are going to do in the work, and we've got a contractor mobilized and driving through town to do all these things. It's way more efficient to have the private sector do these, these tasks. I would hope that we find the money.
Yeah, me too.
And in two thousand and sixteen's budget, that we address this prior to the budget cycle, and we do a longer-term contract, and we get it built into the budget properly, because I, for one, and I think I'm hearing it from the other council members, that I think this is how we want to do business.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would move to amend the motion to adjust the contract terms to include the full scope, including the planning areas in parking lot three and four. I'm not as interested as this, if this is just mowing over here, but at least that parking lot.
Lot eight. Okay, so it's basically going to say ninety-six hundred dollars plus tax for everything.
Yeah.
Was there a price put on the library? I know it's on here and it's not part of the seventy-five, but was there ever a price put on the library?
What he, what...
Fourteen forty.
Is it back there? Fourteen forty. What he did on the, on the bid is he gave us a reduced rate if we did all of it, and that's what I based my numbers on.
Didn't the library agree to do that? That was part of our negotiations with the library, though, because they were going to take responsibility for their own landscaping.
They'd be figuring money to do the libraries, but I'm wondering...
I don't believe so.
No, the...
Exempt.
Well, let's see, now, now we have an amended motion.
Why are they even on there?
I wanted to get the amended motion correct, which were we going to include in the amendment?
My understanding is that the amendment would just basically take their caveat in their estimate that says, if they're awarded all the properties, they'll do it for a reduced price of ninety-six hundred dollars plus tax, because if you add up each one of those individual items, they're, they exceed that, so they're giving us a, an essence of reduction in cost if we were to just, just do them all, because I think they anticipated dropping their price from last year.
I would think that it would make it easier for them as a business to have a crew busy in town, whatever, one day a week with all of these components, so...
I tend to agree.
I would certainly have a kick.
If they're saying ninety-six hundred, why are we saying ten thousand, whatever?
Because the tax, I added the taxes.
Oh, you added the tax?
Yes.
Well, I'm still, yeah, yay, I'm for it. It's what people see when they come into our town, is these parked-like areas, like the triangle and roundabouts and the parking lots, and we don't want to look on that crap just for twenty-four hundred dollars. Did I say crap?
Do you have the words to make the motion clear, because I'm still a little sketchy on exactly what the motion should sound like there?
The motion was to adjust the dollar amount to take advantage of their proposal of the ninety-six hundred per year plus taxes, the full meal deal.
Ninety, right. I think it would just say LLC in an amount not to exceed ninety-six hundred dollars plus tax, and get rid of the reduced scope for the two thousand and fifteen park maintenance services to include all items.
Sure.
Okay, is everybody, everybody in agreement then?
Seconded, not me, so as long as you keep...
Well, Beck and Luke Orelli, the motion and the second, or do you, is that the way you would like?
Right, I just want to clarify then, the library will be something that they'll maintain, or it's going to go back to the library taking care of it?
I'm going to say that, I'm going to give you a wishy-washy answer, I mean, it's, right now, this is a transition year, and so, we had hoped to have heard back definitively that the McCormick Garden Club was going to do that area, and if not, that we were going to have, we would take out the irrigation system and put in a zero scape, so, because I never really heard back at all, I'm assuming that they're maintaining it, but it wouldn't hurt to have that funding in there in case something comes up, and then we have to take out some of those plants and put in some zero scape, so...
Just as, just as a point, the reduction that he gave us by doing all of the entire scope, the reduction was greater than the fee to do the library, so, that's kind of a mute point.
Right, and I was, as you were talking, I was trying to add that number, to come up with that number, but...
And the la, the language does say not to exceed, so that covers it.
Just one of the libraries doing it, and we've said, you know, we'll, we'll continue doing that, if you'll just reimburse us, we'll put it on our contact, maybe they'll reimburse us, and ours won't be quite so high.
Yeah, at this point...
I'm not sure we can do it that way.
At this point, I'm assuming that the library, based on the agreement, they're going to need to maintain it. I'm just saying, if there's a little bit of extra money in there, that we have to go and disconnect an irrigation system, or put in some rocks, we'd have the ability to go to Progressive and say, you've got this in here, you need to go down and do these few items, but...
You think we're on the right track with this amendment?
Yes, I believe so.
I think we're voting on the amendment first.
Right, we're going to, everybody is in agreement where we understand the amendment, so we'll, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of the amendment on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Amendment passes, okay. Now we have the main motion, which has been amended. All right, okay. Any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. That motion carries. All right. Okay, we'll move on to item 7H, and that is a function of the city's public water system operation and maintenance, and, Mr. Dorsey, could you tell us about that one, please?
Thank you. As a function of the city's public water system operations and maintenance, and as required by the U.S. EPA, on June fifth, two thousand fourteen, the City of Port Orchard Public Works Department issued a RFP to three companies listed on the two thousand and fourteen MRSC professional services roster that provide professional services for the monitoring and reporting of the third unregulated contaminant monitoring or UCMR III program compliance. Two bids were received by the established deadline with Babcock Industries for twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars, and they were determined to be the lowest responsible bid. In summary, the bids received are as follows: Babcock Industries, twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars, Eurofin Eaton Analytical, fourteen thousand one hundred and sixty-four sixty-eight, Twist Laboratories did not submit. The city's Public Works Department has confirmed that the professional services acquisition process was followed pursuant to RCW thirty-nine oh eight, and that the project proposal is funded within the water fund of the approved two thousand and fifteen budget. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Babcock Industries in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars for the two thousand and fifteen UCMR III assessment monitoring professional services, with the contract term beginning January first, two thousand and fifteen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, with renewal clause applicable.
I move to approve a contract authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Babcock Laboratories, Inc., in an amount not to exceed twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-two for the two thousand and fifteen UCMR III assessment monitoring professional services.
Second.
Motion, and?
Second.
A second, thank you. Discussion, Mr. Clausen?
Dorsey, could you, I guess I'm just a bit confused between this particular item and the next one that deals with Centric Analytics.
Right, the...
For the same, or different testing?
They're totally different. The, the, the contract that we've had for years with Twist, and now has gone to Centric, is for our normal manganese, fluoride, coliform, it's our normal water system that we've done for years. This was a brand-new requirement that came out of the U.S. EPA, federal government, and there are only a few labs that actually do this type of work. The, I read up on this UCMR III, and it made zero sense to me, so all I can say is, this is a federal requirement, it came down very quickly at the end of the year, we scrambled to try to meet it, we've already received a, a letter from the EPA saying we're non-compliance, and we need to get moving quickly, and we said, this is on tonight's agenda, and I believe when we were dealing with contracts, I told the clerk's office that if any of these two thousand and fifteen contracts come off, this one can't, because we've already got an email from the EPA saying, you're behind in your testing already. So this is a new federal regulation, third, if anybody can tell me what a third unregulated contaminant monitoring program is, I'm all ears, but I read through it, and it made zero sense to me. And it's from the EPA, so it's got to make sense.
So it's got to make no sense.
Twelve thousand dollar requirement, that we have no idea what we're doing.
Exactly. But we'll be in compliance with the U.S. EPA, and Babcock Industries will keep us in compliance, but it has nothing to do with our manganese and other services. And you can see that the parameters, you know, they're all EPA methodology and sampling, and they're all federal code compliance, so, I, I wish I could speak more to this. I went online to try to determine what it was, and like I said, when I read it, it wasn't clear, and I apologize for that. Other than it is the federally mandated testing of third unregulated contaminant monitoring.
No? All right, then, we'll be voting on approval of a contract with Babcock Laboratories in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That motion carries. And 7J, approval of contract with, what is it, Greddy Associates LLC?
Correct.
And, Mr. Vaughn, could you tell us about that one, please?
Thank you. The city has recently received a couple of wetland and wildlife and habitat management reports, and we are tasked with reviewing those under our critical areas code. The first of those reports was for a particular project, and we met onsite with Fish and Wildlife and the tribe, and got feedback on the report that was submitted, and it became pretty clear that we need some technical support from a wetland biologist to help us review these documents and address the comments that are received. And so, we went on the professional services roster and also talked to some of the surrounding jurisdictions here in Kitsap County, and to see who would be a good fit for the city, and off of the professional services roster, we identified a few companies, and ultimately found that Greddy was the right combination of qualifications and price, and that they also represent several other cities in the county for this type of work. So the contract is not to exceed twenty thousand dollars a year, the, any costs associated with third-party review are paid by the developer per resolution zero-zero-four dash fourteen, and so it's not, it's not a net expenditure, it's just a, a pass-through type of cost.
Okay, yes. I move to approve a contract authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Gredd Associates LLC in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand for on-call environmental consulting services.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussion.
Maker, I was just going to, I had three questions, and the reason I asked to take this off is because I was, if we're hiring this company to do this work, and this isn't the first time we've ever looked at environmental considerations, did we used to have an employee that used to do this work, or?
I, we've actually hired this company...
What did we used to do, I guess, is what my question was?
We've actually hired this company previously, I know that they helped, I think, with our Shoreline Master Program in terms of doing some of the background work on it, but I'm not sure what companies my predecessor used. I know that Janine did have a contract with a company, and they were not sending their insurance card annually, and we called them and requested, and they said they're no longer able to, to serve us, and I'm not sure what the reason was, and so we are without a current on-call company at this time.
So is this a pot of money to, for two thousand and fifteen to deal with these kind of issues? Is that what it turns out to be?
It's not a pot of money, but as the issues come up, we'll, we'll roll it into the application fee that a developer pays, and we'll say, look, we have to have third-party review of this report, we'll get a quote specific to that proposal, and then we'll require the developer...
So some of it's going to be pass-through, but some of it's our nickel.
All of it's going to be pass-through.
Then why is there a twenty thousand dollar fiscal impact?
That's just not to exceed twenty thousand dollars annually, so that's, that's limiting the upper end of the contract, so that if, you know, if we have a very large project, I'll bring a, a specific contract back for you to, to approve. But typically, contracts have a not-to-exceed figure, if you want to remove that, I'm, I'm happy to let you...
Well, no, if it's pass-through, I just don't know why we have a twenty thousand dollar deal. Okay.
Well, it's possibility is that we won't even get close to twenty, it just depends on the applications, and what kind of specialty work we need.
It depends on how many reports we get per year, and what the, I guess, how much depth we need to go into on each of those reports, so I wouldn't expect it to hit twenty thousand a year.
Nick, do you have an idea what we spent in the past, like the last year or so, for this type of service?
This is the first one, these are the first reports that we've gotten in that have required this type of review. So, I'm, I'm guessing, you know, ballpark for an average report, you're probably looking at fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars for somebody to do a in-depth review and site visit, but it could be higher if, depending on how bad the initial report is, and, and, you know, some, some biologists that a developer will use will, will write just about anything you want them to, and other ones are very reputable, so it really depends on what you get across the counter in terms of how much it's going to cost to review.
I think the difference is that there weren't developments that have come through in the last, at least since I've been here seven years, that have had environmental issues, where the city just accepted the...
issues where the city just accepted the work done by the consultant. This is basically saying, "Okay, you've got the work by that consultant's biologist. This is the city's way to confirm that that information is correct."
Exactly. One of the reports we received recently, I won't get into the project, but it had streams misclassified, wetland buffers weren't properly surveyed, and there were all kinds of issues that, you know, the tribe came out onsite with us and pointed out. And it became clear that we need somebody who specializes in this that's available to help us if we need it.
So like you're asking for a third-party opinion, some professional opinion in some cases to support their data, so, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Any other questions? Are we ready? Ready for the question then? All right. We'll be moving, we'll be gonna vote on the motion to approve the contract for not to exceed $20,000. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That motion carries. That takes carrier of our business items. We're on our way to reports of council committees. Finance Committee, Mr. Clausen, do you have a report for us?
We have a meeting scheduled for the 20th at 6:30 here in City Hall.
Economic Development Tourism, Ms. Ashby.
Yes, we met yesterday, and the first item on our agenda was we, the economic development of the element of the comprehensive plan was brought forward. John Powers and Kathy from the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance were in attendance and offered valuable input for the development of our plan. And KITA is developing a countywide survey in conjunction with the county, and Mr. Powers invited us to participate in that survey, and I believe Mr. Bond was going to include some of our questions. We also, the countywide planning policy for growth allocation was discussed with the potential of the city accepting a larger allocation for our UGA, and we will be bringing that forward to work-study. We also did a review of the public event process which began first quarter of last year. That was reopened, and the issue will be brought to work-study once modifications have been vetted by our, by economic development. Also, we discussed the development of our media kit to facilitate and promote events within the city, and we are hopeful to have something available as event season is nearing quickly. And we also received an update on our wayfinding system.
Okay, thank you. Utility Sewer Advisory Committee, Mr. Patonso.
Sewer Advisory Committee doesn't meet again until February 18th. Utilities Committee met last week. Number of issues on our agenda, probably the three biggest one was we took up the stormwater utility discussion, and remember, we got testimony in regards to these businesses that have their own treatment and infiltration systems. And we had an interesting debate and discussion around that, and had some discussion on whether those types of, whether those types of businesses, if we could, instead of counting it based on square footage, maybe look at car trips. And what that looks like, we're not sure. We asked staff to get us bring back some more information, and we're gonna continue to work down that path. What it comes to, I'm not sure, but we're looking at it, and we're trying to come up with a creative way to measure impact versus just, you know, a car dealership has a big, great big lot and a whole bunch of cars parked on it, but how many trips are coming in and out of there versus Walmart or Mr. Swan's lumberyard, you know? So trying to measure impact versus just you got a big blacktop lot. So we had an update from Mr. Dorsey on well tan, and then the one item that we're bringing to the next work-study had to do with side sewers. We don't have a formal policy. We had some discussion about our practices, and that's gonna come to us at our next work-study.
Side?
Side sewers. So when you've got a, some jurisdictions, your sewer line from your house to the sewer line is your responsibility, after the main in the middle of the street. Other jurisdiction, it's all your, it's the city's responsibility. Our practice has been the right-of-way, so it's kind of split. And so that's been our practice, and we're gonna have some dialogue and discussion on that at our next work-study. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Cartwright.
Thank you. We had a discussion on sidewalk tables and merchandise primarily in the downtown area. That led to another discussion about airspace and the fact that, I think, believe, I believe what Nick told us was the RCW requires us to enforce the right-of-way leasing that businesses have to obtain from the DOT to put merchandise. So it got to be this, as it still is, this hairy mess. So what we're looking at is having staff go back to DOT and possibly find out what it would cost the city to lease that space directly from DOT and then potentially sublet it, and it may actually wind up being, we're hoping, less expensive than the merchants would have to pay themselves to DOT. So look for some more information on that. We'll look at that also in conjunction with a whole citywide policy on, I'm gonna call it, for lack of a better term, furniture on sidewalks. We had a discussion on the park rules. We'll be moving that to council. We also had a minor discussion on homelessness within the parks, which we think may be a separate issue that comes forward as some other point in the future. We discussed the need to have a parks plan and possibly updating the parks plan to coincide with the comp plan. We discussed whether or not we should have a parks committee, but we deem that we should have enough time within the public property committee to deal with park issues. If we carve out 30 minutes of our hour and a half as needed throughout the year as we look to update a parks plan, and Nick and his staff are gonna take a stab at using their new mind mixer software, did I have that right, Nick? To survey, to survey, to survey the citizens. He brought to us quickly the 640 Bay Street, just as a heads-up, as a courtesy heads-up that it would be on tonight's agenda. We reviewed an annexation petition request, and that will come back in February. It was just a heads-up. He needs to do some more homework for some more information. Discussed impact fees and the attorney's recommendation about adopting that, so that will also move to work-study. You'll be seeing that soon.
I'll correct that. I've talked to the attorney since that meeting, and I think we are gonna hold off on that a little while longer.
There was an issue with a two-hour parking sign at Bay Street in Retzal. I think that sign will be removed due to too many unintended consequences. And then we had in addition another item that had to do with the active club behind Givens, that there's some significant water damage to the tune of potentially $65,000, $64,000, $65,000. That will also be coming to work-study session. That's all I have.
Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Mr. Chang.
Nothing to report.
Chimes and Lights, Ms. Lucarelli.
Nothing to report tonight.
Okay, waterfront? Anything on there? Nope. Outside Agency Committee Reports, we'll start with Ms. Ashby.
Yes, the KRCC had the first meeting of the new year last Tuesday. On our agenda, we discussed the various implementation elements to the new structure that KRCC is going to be under, and that was just a discussion of those. We set appointments for PSRC committees, and Mr. Chang will continue as alternate on the Growth Management Committee at PSRC, and I will continue as the alternate on the Transportation Policy Board Committee. And then the other thing we did at KRCC was review our legislative agenda. On Thursday, I went to the PSRC Trans-Palm Meeting. One of the, the one action item we had was we recommended approval by the Executive Committee for the 2014-15 Coordinated Grant Program list of projects, and that particular grant process is for senior citizens and individuals with disabilities. The other thing we did at PSRC is we discussed and wordsmithed their legislative agenda items.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Cartwright, did you have any report? Any others?
KITA.
Okay.
The Kitsap Economic Development Alliance folks came to Port Orchard and met up with the county commissioners' chambers. The mayor and I both attended that, and I don't know if you'll have something to say about that, but it was a nice meeting, discussing, discussing business and how to attract it and what they're doing for us. I would also say that the Decision Makers Breakfast is coming up on the 28th of January. It's one of the best meetings I think we do around here because it's, we, features economist John Mitchell, who comes to town and gives his outstanding forecast, business forecast that helps, really helps communities and to take a look at what is coming down the road and how it might impact the city. So that's a great event to go to if you have the time to go to it, and that's, again, on the 28th, 7:00 a.m. at the Kitsap Conference Center.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Any other?
I have...
Yes. Sorry. Mr. Chang and then Ms. Ashby.
Counselmember Putonso, just give us a quick summary of his last Kitsap transit meeting.
Sure. The last board meeting, we opened the board meeting with a work-study session. The entire work-study session was devoted to the consultant's business plan that had been worked on for the last year on the passenger-only ferry that was presented to the board. Relevant action items, one, we accepted their report, took no action on that report, just accepted it, and I and others spoke to the need to do more due diligence before any ballot measure is considered by the body. And so that's the direction that staff was given with that. The other major issue to Port Orchard is the Annapolis Ferry Dock. There's, you know, Transit needs to make that ADA compliant by lengthening it and making improvements to it. There's federal dollars, this is the funding source on that, and that the port of Bremerton owns that dock, so we need, so the board authorized staff to meet with the port of Bremerton and pursue either purchasing the facility or a longer-term lease, or I believe are the two options, so, because there's gonna be, need to be improvements there.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
I believe Kitsap Transit is holding some public meetings. Do you know when that is in Port Orchard?
I don't off the top of my head. I've read about it.
I think they're holding two, but I don't think either one is scheduled in Port Orchard.
I could tell you.
I thought you might.
I believe it is the 17th.
The 17th.
And one other, there was, the board authorized staff to try to, Mayor Bremerton very badly wants the Seahawk theme service last weekend and try to have it, make it happen next weekend. I believe, though, that FDA's made that very, Federal Transit Administration made that very difficult for us to try to pull that off, so I thought it was a great marketing opportunity, but I don't believe there's any way we can make that happen.
Well, can't they pay for it completely out of Bremerton's general fund?
That could be an option, I suppose.
Brad, you're so wise. They could make it happen if they wanted.
They could.
Okay, any, yes?
I attended the West Sun Utility District State Audit Exit Interview, and actually, that went very well for them, and except for some reclassification, they came out with a glowing report. So just want to report, you were there as well.
Okay, all right. We'll move on then to mayor's report. And I have just a few short items. I've received probably several dozen comments about our Christmas lights, and they've all been very positive. And a couple of them been in writing. This particular gal, Dorothy Wilson, writes, "Dear folks, thank you so much for the great job with all the beautiful Christmas lights. It gets better every year. I'm sure you put a smile on the faces of all those who come into town. Thanks again, Dorothy." And a lot of comments were just by folks I've talked as I am walking around town or visiting shops, and I have heard comments like, "The display was the best thing about Port Orchard this winter. It's great to see such civic pride shown for a small town like this." And another one told me it was the best light display that they can remember seeing in Port Orchard in a long time. So I did make sure that Mark told everybody at Public Works who worked so hard for actually weeks and weeks to get all those lights up and keep them burning brightly and then turning right around and having to work so hard to take them all down. So it really was one of the nicest displays I've ever seen.
I wanted to say, when we did our light tour, we actually, the council actually wanted to vote for City Hall as the best business.
Yeah.
We didn't think it would be appropriate.
I think it might have been appropriate.
We actually personally feel the second-best light business got the award because we didn't think it would be great.
I just want, I'd like you to know, and I'd like all of the staff to know how that was appreciated by the citizens, it really was. Lots and lots of comments, so. Next thing, I'd like to read a letter from a second grader, and she's a very bright second grader because she's got beautiful printing. I just can't believe a second grader. Anyway, "Dear Mayor Mathis, since you are the mayor, I was hoping you could get a picture of you with Flat Stanley." Here's Flat Stanley here. "A picture with you and Flat Stanley somewhere neat. My class and I would like to see it." And then she gives me your contact information. So I hope that you, councilman, would scrunch together and will hold up Flat Stanley and have the full city council and mayor showing her as Flat Stanley, and we can send that picture to her. And maybe it'll go viral all worldwide or something.
I gotta ask, is that something a second grader would think is neat?
Well, I hope so. I hope so. If she didn't think that was neat, why did she send it to City Hall?
I don't know.
Come on, come on, just a second. And her name is Eve, and Eve Bellamy. So Eve, maybe you, you're probably in bed by now. Hopefully, a second grader'd be in bed, but...
Thank you.
I think this Flat Stanley would look good by you because you're black.
I see, I see.
You guys need to turn the flags.
Okay.
Oh, we're going this way.
Let's get around the flag.
It's taller, there we go.
Okay.
Flat Stanley on City Hall.
Well, I wanna make sure he doesn't...
Got to see him.
Okay, we'll get four on each side.
Send it over your...
Aren't you supposed to hold Flat Stanley?
Well, there we go, Flat Stanley.
He's gotta be over something dark. Oh, how about on the blue? Yeah. You see that?
Can you see that there?
This guy's gonna tell it. Fred, you are so...
I don't know.
No.
Just hold it.
You should go hold it, mayor, she sent it to you.
Yeah. You should be the one holding it.
There, that'll work. That should, like, you get, can everybody see the camera? If everybody sees the camera, we'll be in it.
There we go. Oh, my goodness. So can everybody say Flat Stanley?
Flat Stanley.
Okay, why's it just like, I guess we're gonna do like this, right? Couple more times, Flatsy.
Flat Stanley. All right. Thank you. I think she'll, I think she'll think that's pretty important.
Yeah.
Have all of us there. Last thing, right at the last minute at KRCC, we found out that one of the positions was being vacated, and I think I sent you guys all an email here a few days ago. Some of you may not have caught it. KRCC is looking for a representative at the PSRC, and that's in Seattle, wants...
city of Bainbridge Island put forth Val Tolleson as the representative.
Oh, they have done that?
Yes.
All right, I hadn't heard that. So I was following through with trying to find somebody on our council. All right, disregard that then. If Al has agreed to it at that time, few days ago, nobody from the island had stepped up and said they would do it. It's a big commitment. And then Fred, you're going to still be the alternate, yes. And thank you, Fred, for doing that. Yeah, that's a big commitment. It's over there at least once a month, and it's, what, takes six hours usually. By the time you get the right connections, you get over there, you go to the meeting, you get back. It's an all-day. So, okay, that's it for my report. And let's go on to, we have no, oh, department heads. Mr. Dorsey.
Yes, just let you know that the Bethel interim improvement overlay grinding plans are done, submitted, and they'll be going to Legal Ad and Independent and the Daily Journal of Commerce and uploaded to the Builders Exchange in April, or January, March. So, that's a big, that's a big thing. So, good luck to all those bidders, and hopefully we get some good competitive bids.
I think, I think I've announced to all of you that Mr. Martin had a, an accident in his family, and he's taking care of that. He'll be back, is very soon. He'll, he's on his way back from California now, so that's why he hasn't been at the last few meetings. Mr. Bond.
No comments tonight.
Okay.
No report tonight.
Okay. Brandy?
I just have one. So AWC and MS, MRSC has started to publish their training calendar, so you might see some emails from me in the next couple months saying, hey, here's some training. And if you respond that you want me to sign you up, we'll sign you up. So just putting it out there so that way you guys can know what training's available.
Okay, great. Great. All right, now, we're at the citizens' comments. So please, come up. And thank you for your patience.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Matthews and neighbors.
Can you pull that mic down? There you go.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'm Captain Sherry Barnhart and my spouse of 28 years, Bill Christensen. We live down the block, one house past the Log Cabin Museum. We were robbed on December the 22nd. We're all familiar with the saying, "Our home is our castle." However, what does that really mean? At the heart of this saying is the belief that our home is our sanctuary, our safe place, a place where we're in control and we have the say over who comes and goes. A burglary is the deepest violation of this belief and an assault on our sense of security. The emotional impact of a burglary is very real. When we hear the word burglary, many of us think of monetary loss. The truth is that the emotional damage can be much more devastating than losing material possessions. Yes, there are memories attached to each piece of jewelry that my mother and grandmother gave to me, and losing those people, those pieces are like losing my precious mother and grandmother all over again. I have feelings of helplessness and anger and sadness and violation and fear, and I haven't slept well, and it's going to take some time to heal. We returned from her shopping, and I put the key into the lock and found the chain lock secured from the inside, and our dog came to the door, Lily, and she was shaking. And Bill said, "Get in the car," and called 911. Three Port Orchard police officers were at her home in just a couple of minutes. I guess it pays to live this close to them. Bill and I would like to go on record and take this opportunity to thank Officers Janet Deck, Jerry Johnson, Matt Bell, Nathan Lynch, and Detective Shibley for their great work, continued efforts on this case, and for their guidance in prevention and safety. We have already followed the officers' guidelines and suggestions and have taken measures to install a security system with alarms, a safe, a back gate and stairs. Also, a fence is going up soon. And thanks to our chief, Jeff Marty, and the whole Port Orchard Police Department, and thanks to those behind the scenes whose names we aren't privy to. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We can have a medical watch, Fred.
All right, anyone else? Please, come up.
I didn't know she was coming to do this, but it's two and two, it's come up to four. We were robbed a year ago, Super Bowl Sunday.
Yes.
What I'm after now is, I would like to review the contract that the city of Port Orchard has with Kitsap County prosecutors to do their jur, their, their court work. I understand it is contracted because Port Orchard doesn't have their own prosecuting attorneys and defense attorneys and all. I followed the court cases now for a year to the people involved and all, and it is a travesty of what's going on in our court system. We wonder why our young people are in and out, in and out, in and out. It's because nothing happens to them when they go in. There is no punishment. It's, it's almost a joke, and, but it's sad because it's your home that was robbed. We were very fortunate because we got almost all of our property back. Some of it, like the guns, took a whole lot longer, and it took threatening letters to the prosecutor demanding the RCW that required they keep those guns before they were finally returned to us, because we knew they didn't want us to have them. But as citizens, we have rights. Victims, impact statements are required, but you fill it out, you submit it, and when that person goes to court restitution, you're told, you can file a civil suit if you want to hire an attorney. You're never going to get anything. Why did I fill out an impact statement? Why did I tell them about the computers that were destroyed? Why did I have them fixed? Why did I submit it? Because they're not going to do, they're not going to follow through. You're a victim, and you're responsible for yourself, because nothing's going to happen to the criminal, and nothing's going to happen to you getting anything back. Our dog was injured, our things were stolen, our, our computers were damaged, but that's too bad. We've installed surveillance cameras. That's our responsibility. As the victim, you're required to change, because the criminal is not going to change. They're going to offend again, and again, and again, because it's a revolving door. In, out, in, out. I don't know what they do about fines. I don't know if somebody jumps bail, who gets the bail money? Anybody know? They forfeit their bail. Somebody put it up. Somebody's got to lean against their house or something or rather, but where did the money go?
If you leave a contact number, name or number with the clerk right there, I'll get some of those answers for you.
I'm Glenna Bailey. I know you real well. I do want to say, New Year's Eve fireworks problems were zero. It was dealt with very well. We had no problems like 4th of July.
All right.
Good.
I think you already have this.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? You know, there's always, always room for improvement. I'll, I'll grant you that, and we need to answer some of those questions. What happens to some of that?
I'm a man of wonder, you're a sergeant.
Okay. You remind me of my mom. My mom used to say, "I'm a man of few words," and I've almost used them up. And of course, she wasn't a man at all, but that was her expression, you know?
I'll bet it today.
All right, thank you. Any other citizen comments? All right, I think if there's no objections to anyone, from anyone, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you.